So I wanted to start you off on this subreddit called LGB, nope, LG Ball T, LG Ball T.
Ball T?
Ball T.
What does the ball stand for?
The bi apparently gets erased into just balls.
Oh.
But no, it's, it's drawings that people do of different situations around queer people there where everything is contained inside a ball.
Oh yeah, I think I've seen these. I've seen these with country flags too, maybe.
Maybe, yeah. And I think it's really cute and adorable. And there are a lot of really funny ones on here. And so I just wanted to go over a few.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so we have an arrow race ball, just saying androgynous presenting, and then a blue and pink ball, which we can assume to be a straight person going tsk tsk. How do you expect anyone to want to date you when they can't even figure out what gender you are? And the arrow ace ball just looks at them with an asterix and then goes, you fool.
That was the plan the whole time.
Exactly. That was posted by user Harpoon Shooting Axo.
Right.
A arrow ball. Explain the meaning of arrow ace. Bi ball. Oh, cool. Is that what you are? Arrow. No, I'm just arrow. Anyway, I have to go now. Sorry. Bye. Okay, good. Arrow ball throws fun away. Realization that they might have a chance with this bi ball and the intensity in this image. Are the straights okay or even straight? This is the one that made me want to do this as an audio format. I wish I could stay and talk longer, but I have to go back to the quote ball in chain and quote in 20 minutes, says a cis het ball. Ball in chain? Asks a bi ball. You know, my wife. Your wife? Why are you calling her a ball in chain? Don't you love her? No way. She's super annoying. She keeps wanting to talk. She's boring. Even sex with her is boring. I would much rather hang out with the boys all the time, but no, she keeps calling, asking where I am and she misses me. She's the worst. The, the bi ball gets an idea. Hey, what are you doing? Cut it out. As the bi ball starts tapping the cis het ball with a wooden stick and starting to crack the cis het persona. And then poof, suddenly we have a gay ball there.
Oh. Well, sometimes we make choices.
Yeah. And the gay ball says, I need to talk, go talk to my wife. And the bi ball says, yes, you do.
Oh, good job, ball.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes we have internalized homophobia and I think it's great when we have people in the queer community who can help us realize that.
Super, super important.
Gay ball. Hmm. Today I will eat garlic bread. Clueless. Eats garlic bread. Pop. Suddenly gay and ace. Because ace people love garlic bread. You can ask any ace person and they will tell you the same thing.
No, it's true. Garlic bread is a sexual identity.
Yes. If you think that you have a sexuality, uh, you're wrong. You're actually just ace if you eat garlic bread.
Right.
Hi, I'm Anna, a transgender person.
And I'm Cam, your dad.
And this is the Transgender, a podcast chronicling my transition.
And a cisgender man learning how to support it.
So today we have a listener question. Um, it's sent in by anonymous, but I just have to say I love the username. If you're still listening to our podcast and you sent this question in, you know who you are. I love the username. I recently found out I was trans about eight months ago and I'm wanting top surgery next year, but since I'm 17 next year, my mom says I'm too young to be sure. Is this responsible to wait until I'm 18, 19, 20, or should I continue to ask? Life is getting pretty hard every day, constantly binding. And every time I go to bed, I have to wake up and have chesticles. It would help a lot if I had a date to look forward to. What do you think?
Chesticles.
Chesticles. So let me just come right out and say you aren't going to be able to make a decision about this.
Not when you're 17.
Not when you're 17, um, without your parents consent, uh, which is unfortunate in our society, but is the way that our society is run currently. So whatever you decide you end up doing or anything, just know that you need to have your mom on board until you're 18. And honestly, it might take you until you're 18 to even get in for a surgery. So it's going to be hard. And it might take some education and convincing, but is it responsible to wait until you're 18, 19, or 20? I don't, I think that it's responsible for you to do what you need to do to take care of yourself. You know, I, I don't ever want to see anybody suffer, uh, because they aren't getting a surgery that they're like, well, I'm not responsible enough to get it. Like, that's bullshit. You can always, always make the decisions that you think are going to make you happy. I mean, we don't think like, we don't have to wait three years before getting a tattoo, right? Like.
Right, right. You don't need multiple doctors and a psychiatrist to help you with all that. Yeah, exactly.
So when you feel like it's a, it's a decision that you want to make, that you need to make, that is going to help you, I say, start looking in that direction, start moving towards that.
Well, and I get to, I mean, two things, being 17, being a teenager and working through your identity and what's going to make you feel euphoric. That's really hard. It's hard at any age, but as a teenager, we just know that's, that's part of the overall how we find our identity. But the other thing that you've mentioned is having something on the calendar, I think is the important part of what you're saying, like having some milestones and some things to look forward to is really important. So it might not be top surgery, but what are the next steps you're thinking of taking and the, the things that your mom is going to be willing to support you in along the journey that's going to get you to, to that thing that you want?
Exactly. And you know, ultimately a solid date is nice to look forward to, but you can also look at the date of like, hey, this is going to happen. You know, like you're going to get chest surgery. You're going to get top surgery if that's what you want. And I know for me, that has been one of the best things keeping me going, uh, for myself with my surgeries. It's like, I know that I'm going to get bottom surgery eventually, like that's just going to happen. And as we get closer and as we get closer, it gets more and more stressful, but it also gets way more and more exciting too. And so you can always look forward to, this is going to happen if you want it to happen. I just wanted to bring up a quick few points about binding and tucking while we're here. So the first is to wake up and have chesticles is a feeling that I wish I could understand, but I, I just don't. I love, uh, I love titties. If you couldn't tell from this podcast.
We have a sticker. We're fans here.
We're fans.
We know that that doesn't make you feel euphoric.
Yes. And that's what we want to do is we want to help people feel euphoric. So I always try and think about changing the narrative of our brains, changing the narrative of how we feel to being more positive, looking at things in a positive light. And I know that that's hard. I know that that's really hard when it comes to trans stuff, but one of the things that you can wake up and say, oh, I have chesticles, but you know, but I have this really cool, uh, blazer that I want to wear, or I have this really cool suit jacket, or this really cool non-binary androgynous, like dress slash suit slash, uh, wicked horns piece, you know? I, I really want you to look forward to the other things in life that can make you see the positives and the things that can help you get through the things that are really making you feel dysphoric, because ultimately life is too short to feel dysphoric all the time. You gotta look for those euphoric moments. And that's why we do our podcast is to help you guys feel euphoric.
And you were just about to talk about tucking and binding.
Yes. Um, so binding, please, if you're doing it, make sure that you are doing it for no more than eight hours, that you're staying healthy, that you work yourself up to as long as eight hours, um, because it can be really dangerous and there are side effects. And I have seen people who have had difficulties in their life because of binding. It's not super common, but it happens and I don't want it to happen to any of you. So please stay safe. If you're tucking, same criteria applies. Please work yourself up to a higher level. Tucking should never feel pain. There's going to be discomfort, but it should never feel painful. And if you're feeling that pain, if you're tucking for longer than eight hours, trust me, I've done it. It's not fun and it really starts to hurt after a while. And it's not worth it. You know, what's worth it more? Tucking for 16 hours, 24 hours, 48 hours, and then not being able to tuck for a week? Or tucking for eight hours when you can take, giving yourself a break and then tucking, you know, again, for when you need it. So really just be conscious of that. And I'm really lucky in my transition and where I'm at to not be able to have to tuck as often, you know, I wear dresses a lot and things like that, which allow me to not have to tuck as frequently, but I know that that's not feasible for everyone. And so just please make sure that if you're binding, if you're tucking, just be safe. Make sure that you're okay and stay healthy.
Please stay healthy. Drink lots of water.
Always, always drink water.
Our main topic today, we have touched on before, but I really want to do a deep dive. And the reason why I want to do a deep dive is because in our community, our city across the bay.
Our twin.
Our twin, our twin, the twin in the twin ports here, um, recently was in the news because they had some parents speak at a school board meeting against what is being framed nationwide as gender ideology or anti-gender ideology being taught to students. And specifically the issue that was being brought up in this, uh, small city schools was the idea that there would be some gender related education that talks about being trans and non-binary at a fifth grade level. And so that it was really, really specific and it's maybe not as intense as some of the other school district or national conversations are. But that's the closest to home that I think we've seen so far in this conversation. And it got me.
Yeah.
It got us both really mad, is what it did. Um, because there was a lot of misinformation right in our own backyard here and a lot of parents talking about things that just are completely untrue. Such that this entire topic is beginning to be labeled as critical gender theory. Because the same people that are upset about this idea of teaching gender in schools are also really upset about critical race theory for the most part.
Looking for positivity within our community? Then listen to Queer We Are, the podcast where you hear some of the most interesting and successful LGBTQ plus people share uplifting stories, including their definition of success, how they achieved it, and what they learned along the way. Guests include celebrities, activists, politicians, athletes, and many more. Click the link in the show notes and check us out or go to queerweare.com. If you've been looking for both fun and inspiration, now you know where to find us. Queer We Are.
I, I just, it, this whole situation, this whole article has gotten me so upset. Not only because it's in my backyard and as a trans educator, that really irritates me because these are people who should be coming to me and asking for my help, asking for any trans person's help in learning and knowing, figuring out what it's like to be trans before speaking on the issues that they know nothing about. But really what is making me so upset, what's pissing me off the most about this is the fact that this isn't a debate about, well, we don't want to teach our kids about, you know, the, the sexuality or anything. They're too young for that. They're too immature. No, no, no. This is debate about do trans people exist and should we teach about them? And that's not okay, because you, what you're saying is, what I've read multiple articles now is, oh, well, there's this, these are, these are parents who are concerned about the education of trans people and things like that. And I'm like, um, the education about people you should be saying, because yes, we are trans, but we exist as people and you need to fucking respect us. And this is not a group of parents who are like, oh, well, we're concerned about this. This is a group of parents who are transphobes, who don't believe trans people exist. And are trying to teach all of our kids that trans people don't exist because they are bigots and not loved by me.
Are disguising it behind some idea of both this idea of kids being too young and quote unquote, science that they, um, have, have really planted their flag in. And, um, so I'm actually not going to name the websites that I'm using for research here because I, I, this is misinformation that I don't want to spread anywhere on the internet. Um, a quick Google search on gender ideology or parents against gender ideology will get you whatever you want from that side of this debate. And so.
And let me just be clear, sorry to everyone who is listening, uh, who will do this, who will search this up. Know that we are not keeping sources from you out of like, we're, we're trying to, you know, hide our resources or anything. We are trying to make sure that you do not get caught up into the spiral that we have been caught up in for the last day and a half.
I, I don't, well, yes, that and I don't want to perpetuate misinformation. I mean, if we have already linked many sources for great information and.
Actual science.
The, the word that I want to use is neutral information, which is so bizarre to me. This is not a liberal versus conservative issue. It's the, the truth or not the truth. So.
Yeah, it's fact versus fiction.
There's some words I need to get out of my mouth and that's, that's it. And that's what this is. This website that I'm reading right now is propagating untruths. And so, I guess there's an evolutionary biologist, Colin Wright, uh, who is often referred to by these groups and talks a lot about his sort of defined for people who don't believe that trans people exist, the evolutionary qualities of biological sex, although as usual is confusing that for gender. And then giving that to these parents and saying gender is biological sex and we need to stop teaching our children otherwise. The other talking points that I think we need to really be prepared for in this debate, um, include social roles. And this has been talked about a lot by people of certain religious faiths. I read an article by a, um, a rabbi, a Jewish rabbi who talked about the fact that allowing schools to talk about gender identity without having it be based in religious, typical male female roles is actually doing disservice to those of faith who believe these things. And, uh, again, I hear that argument. I think that that has been applied in many, many really horrible places in our whole history, including anti-LGBTQ issues in general, uh, has been used against race in the past too. I mean, we've talked about, um, interracial marriage and, and the fact that, uh, there have been religious arguments against interracial marriage, which seem absurd to most people, uh, who are not bigots today. But this is the comparison we're making. I mean, this is, this is that.
I mean, absolutely. I just, I, I heard a really interesting thing that I want to share here and I wish I remembered the exact thing so I could quote it in article and like link it here, but, um, I heard a quote from a TikTok that was, oh, well, you know, I don't like you being your gender. I don't like you getting married on whatever because it's against my religion. And it's like, oh, I'm sorry. I don't like you eating that garlic bread because I'm allergic to garlic. Like, that's the same argument. It's like, it's dumb.
You're gonna end up being ace. So.
Yeah. And if you eat the garlic bread, you're gonna end up being ace, which means you're going to be a part of our community. No, it's just like, it's such a stupid and weird argument to be like, oh, well, I'm so sorry, but like you guys existing, you guys getting married, you guys being yourselves, that's against my religion. I can't have you doing that. It's like, okay, well, I'm allergic to nature. I can't have you going to mow in the grass. Like, what the fuck is this argument? It's not going to go anywhere.
I've always, I can't believe I've never said this on the podcast, but I live by a mantra that I learned many, many, many years ago, which is the right to swing my fist goes as far as your face. And that just means that I, my bubble of my identity should be my own concern and I should be able to flail as wildly as I want within that. And when it does impact you, especially negatively, um, and in a way that is tangible, as opposed to my feelings are hurt, uh, which is often used against those of us that have a more liberal viewpoint. And that's what I find hilarious. I'm like, oh, I hear a lot of whining and crying from both sides, um, to be quite honest.
They're trying to teach our kids gender ideology. And it's like, okay, well, we can maybe not be fighting about this. And maybe if you start respecting us and our identities, we won't be getting upset about this because fun fact, it's not hurting our feelings that you're doing. It's literally killing people and it's hurting people and it is causing physical harm to people. So shut your mouth and go cry in your corner, you fucking cocktard, uh, whatever. I don't, Sean Hannity and anyone else. Yeah. Whatever fucking conservative you want to use. Yeah.
So, I mean, I think, I don't want to over dwell on this because I think a lot of the main points that we use to battle disinformation in general about the trans community applies in this case, you know, a lot of the things that we've talked about on the podcast. But here's what I want you to be aware of, and that is that very small groups of activist parents are storming schoolhouses right now in your backyards to tell teachers and school districts, I want the right to say no to certain kinds of education for my child. But that is specifically having to do with these ideological issues that promote honestly intersectional.
Thinking.
Thinking about, about the fact that other humans exist in the world that are not cisgender white people.
I mean, again, we will always say we are the whitest people you will ever meet. But we believe in intersectionality. We believe in the rights of every single person to be taught about and talked about in schools equally. But seriously, from a trans person, from somebody who will be impacted by these kids either learning or not learning about my existence and learning about their own existences, this needs to be taught in schools and not by a, well, we're going to opt out or we're going to have a program or you have to opt in or anything like that. Like, that's not how this works. This needs to be taught to every single person.
Well, and what is being taught is vetted by professional educators and is appropriate for the age levels that are being taught to. So I think the part of the misconception, and this is maybe where we can find some common ground. Part of the misconception might be that this teacher is a woke liberal who, um, is trying to push ideology. And they're going to teach my child about, um, going on hormone treatments and, uh, that, you know, different kinds of euphoric surgeries exist. That's not what we're talking about for fifth graders. Do I think that that's inappropriate to teach in fifth graders? Honestly, not really. But that those things exist in the world, but that's not what we're teaching in schools. We're teaching the fact that gender exists in schools.
Do, do I think that it's inappropriate to teach kindergarteners about intercourse? Absolutely, I do. We can all agree on that. That's not what we're teaching kindergarteners. What we're teaching kindergarteners is, hey, you might be a boy, you might be a girl. Maybe you're not either. Maybe you're all, maybe you're both, maybe you're nothing. Like, there can be so many variabilities in there and it has nothing to do with your genitalia. It has nothing to do with the sex of the person that you date. It has nothing to do with the sex that you are going to have when you are older, because fun fact, gender and gender expression and the biological sex you were born with and everything like that, like all of that is made up and not real. And something that society has created that now we are trying to force all of our children into boxes over.
You just mentioned not teaching sexual intercourse, intercourse to kindergarteners. And so here maybe I have the right example that I was trying to look for.
Yeah.
So yes, we're not going to teach intercourse to kindergarteners. What we are going to teach kindergarteners is how to build healthy and strong connections with other human beings, which is the backbone that we should then be building our sex education programs on later in life when it's more appropriate. Like these things don't, a one-term class on sex education taught by your gym teacher is not the effective tool in providing healthy sexual adults. It's a continuous societal building of their ability to cope with each other and their own bodies. And that starts from birth, you know?
I mean.
And that's what we're talking about with gender here too.
Honestly, like you are, no one, well, no one who matters is advocating for your kids to learn about sex and to learn about what it means to have sexual intercourse, because that's not, that's not what we need to be teaching kindergarteners. That's not what we need to be teaching third graders. Some may argue that's not what we need to be teaching fifth graders. I think those people are wrong, but I see where they're coming from. Um, but we do need to be teaching kids is gender and that whatever they are feeling is okay, you know? I heard from a really, from someone who is learning, who I'm helping to educate today, said, I never want, uh, you know, that, that little kid to feel isolated, to feel alone.
Yes.
And that they don't have anybody who is like them. You know, we teach about boys and we teach about girls and we teach about liking a boy or liking a girl and, you know, that boys have to like girls and everything. And she was like, I don't want any kid to feel like, well, I'm a boy and I like boys. And I don't have anybody who's like me. And I'm a girl who likes girls. I don't have anyone who likes me. And I'm a boy who says that I'm a boy, but maybe I don't feel like a boy. You know, like there are so many different ways. And that's really important to say to those kids, you are not alone. You have people who love and support you and you can be and should be whatever you feel like, you know, because childhood is the best time to explore that, I think. Um, you're not living on your own. You're not having to buy all these expensive things. Like, try wearing a dress. Nobody's going to tell the fucking difference. And so I really want everyone to start advocating for trans kids, start advocating for queer kids, start advocating for yourselves. Because all of us are impacted by what these kids are learning. And there is a very local, sorry, there is a vote. There is a very vocal and loud minority about. Oh my God, why can't I get my thoughts straight anymore? Cause I'm gay, that's why. There's a very vocal and loud minority advocating for teaching none of this to children, for saying, saying that we do not exist as trans people, as queer people. These things are horrible and horrifying and things that we shouldn't be teaching children. And things that, oh, well, they don't exist. So why are we teaching about them? I'm sorry, trans people exist. Queer people exist. Black people exist, you know, BIPOC people exist. And so let's stop erasing history and let's start teaching kids in the present now about history, about queer people, about trans people, about BIPOC people, about everyone, because kids need to know. And when kids have an understanding, and I assure you, the bigots know this too, those walls of segregation, separation, discrimination, all start to fall down and crumble. Education is foundation.
And so what we're imploring you to do is pay attention to what's going on in your own communities. And that's, you know, we, we have our eye out for when, um, there's shenanigans happening in, in our own backyards. And that's why we wanted to bring this to light too, to you, our, our dear audience, because, um, this is happening all across the country and in all communities. And, uh, don't let that, that vocal minority make the decisions on whether or not we want our kids to feel like they are supported in their identities.
Yes, please. If you are seeing these same shenanigans, the same shit, the same backwards ass thinking in your own communities, try and do something about it. I know how hard that is and I know how inconsequential you feel. Trust me, I am a trans educator and I feel the exact same way in my own community. But it does matter. If you can get your voice out there and tell these people how wrong they are and tell people around them how wrong they are, you can change at least one mind.
Do you have a gender euphoria to share?
I do. Ending on a good note, I'd just like to say, this was sent in by anonymous. And it starts off, I just want to say firstly, that I love Anna's laugh. It sounds really pretty. Thank you.
Oh, that's why you wanted to read this one.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to read this one. Uh, no, I really appreciate it. I am very dysphoric about my laugh. And so I appreciate that little euphoria today. My euphoria of the week is that I met my sister's friends and they all gendered me correctly and used he/him for me and I, and didn't question it at all. And I have to say, that is amazing. Good job to, good job to your sister. Good job to your sister's friends. It seems like you have some really cool and supportive people around you and I'm so happy for you. Keep kicking, keep fighting.
The thing I'm going to say is going to make me sound extremely old, but, and I don't know what age you are. But it seems to me, based on the feedback that we get from our listeners, that there is an upcoming generation of young folks that are pretty much immediately accepting of each other and their identities. And I say, hell yes to that, because, uh, I had a pretty accepting generation that is part of this whole ordeal we just talked about in this episode. I'm so happy to hear that you can go to your sister's friends and feel like you are seen and that your identity is cared about.
It really matters to not just you, but to all of us. And I, I love you. Keep doing what you're doing. And you are fantastic human and congrats on your he/him pronouns.
If you have questions about transitioning or supporting someone who is transitioning and you'd like us to talk about it on the show, please shoot an email to questions@transgendapod.com, click the chat with us button on our website or DM us on social media. And if you want to support the show, you can now join our Patreon.
Shout outs this week to our patrons Ken and Amy R, Melissa K, and Amy K. Thank you so much for supporting us.
Thank you.
Be sure to check out our episode description for links on today's resources. And be sure to keep a lookout on your feed. We're going to have some cool information coming out. And also just be cool. Look at your local news.
Thanks for listening. I've been Cam.
I've been Anna.
And this is the Transgender.
Love you all, except the bigots. Love you all, except the bigots.
Would you like to support our podcast? Well, you're in luck. We have a Patreon now. Just visit patreon.com/TransgenderPod and for as little as $3 a month, you can support the content that we're creating. And for $20 a month, you can join our sticker club, which provides you with a monthly live stream, a shout out on the podcast and a sticker every month from ourselves and creators that we adore. Again, just visit patreon.com/TransgenderPod and thank you for all your support.